Could everyone take your seats, please? Before we start, I’m going to initiate a new policy. Town Clerk and I discussed. We’re sending those who are not registered to vote, non-citizens, on the bleachers. Nothing wrong with the bleachers, but it’s a way for us to keep an honest count of those who are entitled to vote and those who are not. So I would ask all those who are nice and comfy on the bleachers, if you do vote in town, you have your card, please consider taking a seat with the rest of the audience. We may fine-tune this in the future, but right now, this is the way we’re going to go. We’re good? A quorum of 50 being present, I now call our 2020 special town meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance and join us if you wish. Carl Keener, would you like to lead us? Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. One nation, one country, one home. Thank you. Please be seated. Good evening, fellow citizens of Southampton. I’m Robert Floyd, your town moderator. It’s an honor, a privilege, to serve you. I thank you for your support. For full transparency and disclosure, I also serve you by being Southampton Cemetery Commissioner, Superintendent of our three cemeteries, the Southampton Historical Society Board Member, East Hampton Media Board Director. I think that’s it. There’s no compensation to me or any financial gain in any of these privileges as I serve I publicly thank Carl Keener, now in his fifth successful year as our deputy town moderator. Our town meeting is a business meeting of Southampton, our legislative branch session called pursuant to a posted warrant. The official record of what will be discussed and the only topics on which this town meeting can take any action. True tests offers to return. This is a certified I have served the within warrant by posting attested copies thereof in six usual places, 14 days at least before the time of holding said meeting dated January 23rd, a letter. And you are hereby directed to serve this warrant by posting attested copies thereof in six usual places in said town, 14 days at least before the time of holding said meeting. Hereof, fail not, and make due return of the warrant with your doings thereon to the town clerk at the time and place of meeting as aforementioned. Given under our hands the 21st day of January, New Year 2020, Select Board Marine Grodmatt, Roland John Martin, Francine Tishman, and Christine Fowles. May we have a moment of silence, keeping with our tradition in Southampton, for those Thank you. Tonight, our special town meeting is being recorded as well as sent out live on our Channel 191 cable access station. I thank you, Ryan Arnold, Tim Riley, Jen Ramsey, East Hampton Media. The warrant. Articles enter a warrant that is posted in at least five, maybe six, maybe seven locations and warns the people of a legislative meeting. You have heeded the warning. It used to be mandatory, and those who were tardy were fined. You changed that. The executive branch of a town’s government, Select Board, Finance Committee, Treasurer Collector, Accountant Clerk Administrator have worked hard to create and weigh in on the articles for tonight’s town meeting warrant. Their work is done. Speaking of work, the executive branch of a town government has numerous vacancies for the various commissions and committees. We, being the town’s legislative branch, cannot discuss this yet. If interested, contact Town Hall for details. Thank you. You are welcome. Although some of these executive branch members sit up front, by our tradition, they individually do not have more of a vote nor say tonight than any of you in our special town meeting. Moderator’s rules, not town council’s legal opinion, apply when our town meeting is in progress. Your moderator permits commercial TV cameras, a privilege, not a right, if and only if they agree to remain in the back of the town meeting room on the far side of the floor line or outside the building, not in aisles or hallways. We are not subject to the open meeting law. Duties of a moderator. My role as your town moderator is to facilitate, provide an open process that voters trust, and administer rules and guidelines in an even-handed manner, fully and partially, consistently, regardless of who you are, not to assure any particular outcome. I ensure those who wish to address this town meeting have opportunity and ensure that integrity of our town meeting stays as intact as possible. Both sides need to be heard on each article. No one has ever been denied to speak at a town meeting I have moderated. Moderator’s authorities over process, not outcome. I leave the outcome to you, Southampton inform voters. Procedures accomplish things instead of manipulating town meeting proceedings. I hope every dedicated voter, as they serve the town, so if you’re inexperienced here tonight, hold your back, allow me to walk you through the process. Anyone may challenge my process with a point of order. Yelled from your seat, I invite you to the mic, where you then describe what pending action is frivolous, irrelevant, illegal, or contrary to proper procedure. Any attempt to misuse it as a device to usurp the floor will be dealt with firmly. Duties of voters, your responsibility, be the legislative branch of our town government for tonight’s articles. You have power to make laws, the power of the purse, and to exercise your freedom of speech. Speaking and participating at a town meeting is a right, but like all rights, it should not be abused nor denied. Ground rules, courtesies, guidelines. It’s important to set the merrily than stick with them. Town meeting is a legislature subject to its own rules within the Commonwealth laws. It needs rules. One of my duties as your moderator to protect rights of individuals against illegal encroachment, unintentional or otherwise. Our town meetings are conducted in accordance with general laws, our bylaws, traditional customs, and practices we have followed for many years, with guidance by the principles and rules of conduct in town meeting time, a handbook of parliamentary law, organic processes as our customs, traditions, and practices evolve. Once a motion is read, and I have asked to receive the second, then I invite a pro and then a con statement. All discussions must be relevant to a motion under a warrant article and within the scope of each article before us. Merits or lack thereof for the motion. It’s when after a comment is ruled out of order or scope, the speaker continues to debate the moderator. That’s when the speaker is directed to sit down. Speaking at the mic, you’re ready to contribute something new? Please approach the mic up front. Stand in line to be recognized and turned by the moderator. First come, first heard. I recognize speakers only standing at the mic unless it’s a point of order where you can yell it from your seat. Address the moderator. State your name and address clearly. Please direct your questions and answers to me, your town moderator. This is designed to prevent lecturing, bullying, intimidation, and cross-examinations. The conduct, town meeting conduct, is the moderator’s responsibility, as authorized by General Laws, Chapter 37, Subchapter 15, and Subchapter 17. You can speak up to five minutes at a time, provided you stick to the subject of the motion at hand. No more than two times per article, except to correct an error or answer a question. Please allow everyone an opportunity to be heard before you request to be heard a second time on an article. Remarks concise, to the point. I will allow anyone who previously spoke to address the meeting a second time with a new point or rebuttal. No repetition, no repetition. Before you vote yes or no, you individually are free to question, to amend, not encouraging this, and will not discourage this either, and to table or kill any motion that is legislate all in a civilized way. Rude behavior, especially shouting, bullying, lecturing, personal attacks will not be tolerated. Anyone unwilling to comply with these rules will be removed after their third warning, so let this be our first warning. Anyone unsatisfied with a lack of information for an article may motion to adjourn our town meeting tonight to a time certain for the presenter to obtain the necessary information. Our pre-appointed counters, when needed, will count a section as a pair, then compare counts. When they do not agree, count resumes for a complete inaccurate count to be announced out loud so all can hear, and they count from front to back. Any reason to move the order of articles? Outside speakers, as is our custom, we vet somebody new to address you. I will read the names, Ms. Paula Hendrick, Mr. Peter Westover. Anyone else? We’re good. Without objection, these non-voters within interest will be permitted to speak in this and future town meetings. Hearing no objections, we proceed. Thank you. Simply because someone states something does not make it true. Majority leaning toward approving or denying does not make it right by itself. Listen courteously, listen courteously, vote exactly as you think right. Thank you all for your patience and respecting everyone tonight. These guidelines will assist us in a more efficient meeting. Mayor, hear a motion for Article 1, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the Select Board to acquire by purchase, gift, or otherwise on such terms and conditions as a Select Board shall determine a parcel of land, commonly known as 57 Cold Spring Road, Southampton, being Tax Map 6, Parcel 19, to be preserved as open space and designated as “no motorized vehicles permitted,” end of quote, and to authorize the Select Board to enter into all agreements and take all related actions necessary or convenient to carry out said acquisition.
Motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Finance Committee recommends, and simple majority. Who would like to speak on this article?
Yes, I’m Paula Hendrick. I live in Lester, Massachusetts, and my father and I are hoping that the voters will vote for the town to accept this donation of land. It’s a lovely parcel, and my parents in 1970 gave Acre Ridge, which is now the Lyman Conservation Area in Southampton, and we’d like to continue that family tradition of land conservation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone who want to speak in opposition? Seeing nobody want to speak in opposition, floor is open. Anyone who want to add to comments, step right up to the mic.
Thanks, Mr. Moderator. Pete Westover, I’m a Whately resident, but I have a firm called Conservation Works, and my colleague and I have been lucky enough to work with Paula and Ted on this project and also with the Southampton Conservation Commission, developing trail plans for the 111 Glendale Road property, the Clearwater Conservation Area, and the Manhan Meadows. So I just, I’m here to say that there are a number of things that really make this a terrific property for conservation purposes. One is, it’s got a beautiful stream running through it that ends up down at the Manhan. It’s got some really impressive specimen trees, oaks, tulip poplars, that Ted has taken good care of for a long time. It is in the vicinity of some other protected land, including the big Clearwater parcel that has a number of trails on it, and potentially it could be part of a trail network. It’s also gotten high marks from the Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program. The BioMap 2 Inventory lists the property as part of a critical natural landscape. And the other program is the Mass Conservation Land Tax Credit Program, which more people ought to know about, because what it does is it encourages donations of restrictions or land for conservation purposes by putting up a tax return for the donors, up to $75,000 or half the value of the gift. And it’s been really, I’ve worked with a number of owners in many towns with this program, and I recommend it. So I know there are a number of people who will be supporting this project, but it’s your call, and I hope you vote in favor. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And by the way, the map that goes with this Article 1 is the one with no staples in it, and on the bottom it says Article 1, Land Donation. So if you want to follow along, that’s the map of the moment. Yes, who else would like to speak?
Good evening. Ed Gibson, Town Administrator, and I’d just like everybody to know that we received a communication from Paula Hendrick, and it says, “My father and I will be paying for any necessary surveying, title search, closing costs, and any other minor legal fees, because future town ownership with management control by the Conservation Commission will establish Article 97 protection. A conservation restriction will be not required.” But the Hendricks have also offered to cover any of the closing costs that go with this, so there will be no hitting costs to the town.
Thank you. By the way, there’s plenty of seats in the front row and one or two in the second row if you want to come up, those of you standing. Anyone else want to speak on this? Any questions, comments? Seeing none, we’re going to vote. All those in favor of the motion on Article 1, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously.
I just want to say on behalf, on behalf of Southampton, we just want to say thank you very much to Mr. Hendrick and his family.
This is where I’m supposed to say, save your applause for your voting, but you’ve already voted, so. Mayor, a motion for Article 2, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer appropriate $126,502.25 from free cash to the capital stabilization fund.
Motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to speak on this?
Vicki Morrow, Palmory Manor Road, Town Accountant. This is part of a policy the Select Board passed back in 2015, where we would appropriate a certain percentage of our free cash that was certified at the end of the fiscal year into capital stabilization fund.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone who want to speak in opposition? Anyone else have any comments, questions? Seeing none? I see movement and cheer now. Seeing none, we’ll vote. All those in favor of the motion on Article 2, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article 3, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer $108,430.50 from free cash to the operational stabilization account.
Motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Finance Committee recommends, and we need a simple majority. Who would like to speak in favor of this?
I’m just going to pull up a chair, Robert.
Yeah, it’s good. Okay, I’ll bring her right over.
I’m just kidding. Vicki Morrow, Palmory Manor Road, Town Accountant. This is another piece of that policy the Select Board passed in 2015, was to put a 30% of our free cash that was certified at year-end into the operating stabilization fund.
Thank you. Anyone who want to speak in opposition? Anyone who might have any more comments, questions? Seeing none, we’ll vote. On the motion for Article 3, simple majority. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion for Article 3 passes unanimously. Mayor, a motion for Article 4, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer $36,143.50 from free cash to the other post-employment benefits accounts.
Motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Who would like to speak on this? Vicki?
Vicki Morrow, Palmory Manor Road, Town Accountant. This is the third piece of the policy that was passed in 2015, to put a percentage into the OPEB account, which Mass General Law put into statute a few years ago. They wanted all the communities in the state to be able to put away retirement funding for the future as a liability.
Thank you. Who would like to speak in opposition? Seeing none? Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, we’ll vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article 4 passes unanimously. Mayor, a motion for Article 5, please.
Mr. Moderator, move that the town vote to transfer $200 to fund the amortization of the WPAT bonds, said sum to be taken from the WPAT loan repayment account.
Motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to speak on this?
Vicki Morrow, Palmory Manor Road, Town Accountant. Each year at our May Annual Town Meeting, we appropriate money from the WPAT repayment loan for septic betterments, and it should have been, that was appropriated in May, $20,400 and not $20,200. So we need to transfer the $200 so we can repay this loan back for year 2020.
Thank you. Anyone who want to speak in opposition? Any comments, any questions? Seeing none, we’ll vote. A motion under Article 5. Finance Committee recommends, we need a simple majority. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article 5 passes unanimously. Mayor, a motion for Article 6, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer appropriate $15,000 from free cash to a health insurance plan design change account per Master and Order Law, Chapter 32B, to fund the payment for union employees for implemented health insurance plan design changes.
Motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Ed Gibson, Town Administrator. In June of 2017, the Select Board passed or approved Mass General Laws, Chapter 32B, Sections 21 through 23, which allows the town to bargain and implement health design changes. But by doing that, the town has to share a portion of the estimated savings with the union employees that are enrolled in the health plans, the health insurance plans. So this $15,000 is the portion that the town is entitled or has to share with the union members that are enrolled in those health plans as part of the health insurance changes that took effect.
Anyone who want to speak in opposition?
Yes, the $18,000 was the original estimate of what this was going to cost, but when we went through it, $15,000 is the revised amount, and that will cover this.
The moderator was informed before that there would be a change, and since there’s a reduction, the moderator agreed. Your copies were already printed, so rather than having an amended motion, we simply, thank you for catching it. Anyone who want to speak against it? Seeing none? We’ll vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article 6, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article 6 passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article 7, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer appropriate $3,825 to the town insurance general expense account for unanticipated increase in town-owned building property values, said sum to be taken from free cash.
Motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Finance Committee recommends, we need a simple majority. Who would like to speak on this?
Ed Gibson, Town Administrator. And the amount that we had originally budgeted actually came a little short from what we were actually invoiced for fiscal year 20. That was due to an increase in the value in the Norris School valuation and not having as many participation credits as we had in the previous year. So this makes up that difference.
Thank you. Anyone who want to speak in opposition? Seeing none? Any comments, any questions? Then we’ll vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article 7, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. A motion for Article 7 passes unanimously. Mayor, a motion for Article 8, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer $10,000 from the police communication wages account to the police overtime wage account to account for overtime incurred due to current staff shortages.
Motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to speak on this?
Vicki Morrow, Palmory Manor Road, Town Accountant. As indicated in the motion, there are going to be some overage in the overtime for the police wages, and luckily enough, we received a $30,809 grant from the state for emergency 911 communications. So we are able to relieve that expense from a different line item, because we’ll be able to transfer those funds that we spent for communication wages to the grant and relieve that and let the police use those wages for anything they need for this fiscal year.
Thank you. Who would like to speak in opposition for this motion? Seeing none? Who? Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, we’ll vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article 8, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article 8 passes unanimously. Mayor, a motion for Article 9, please.
Mr. Moderator, move that the town vote to transfer $5,000 from election/registration expenses to the election/registration wages account to fund the payment of the election workers’ change payment from vendor to payroll per Internal Revenue Services regulations.
Motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to speak on this?
Vicki Morrow, Palmory Manor Road, Town Accountant. IRS regulations require that anyone who is employed by the town needs to go through the payroll system and not the vendor system. So when we decided to switch all those election workers to payroll, when we did the budget for 2020, we budgeted all those in an expense line item, and in order for us to pay them, we need to make sure we have enough money in the wage line item to pay them for this fiscal year.
Thank you. Anyone who want to speak in opposition? Seeing any comments, questions? Seeing none, we’ll vote on the motion under Article 9. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article 9 passes unanimously. Mayor, a motion for Article 10, please.
Mr. Moderator, move that the town vote to transfer $5,000 from free cash to the reserve fund account, as it was not funded in the FY 2020 budget. The reserve fund is necessary to be funded in case of extraordinary and unforeseen expenses throughout the fiscal year.
I have a motion. Can I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Finance Committee recommends, simple majority, and I can have a bench brought over to you.
That’s okay, I’m good.
More comfortable in your chair.
I sit all day. I need to stand and walk, so. I sit all day. I need to stand and walk, so. Vicki Morrow, Palmory Manor Road, Town Accountant. As it states here in the budget for 2020, when we were trying to, when we were trying to give some of the other departments a little bit of extra money here and there, we didn't fund the Reserve Fund. And I want to put that $5,000 back in there to have something in case an unforeseen, unexpected expense comes up where someone doesn't have any money in their budget that they weren't looking forward to spending. Now, back in 2012 and 13, when I first came here, we had $40,000 in that account. So, now I think at least to have $5,000 is prudent to be able to pay for anything that comes up because it's illegal to overspend your budget, too.
Thank you. Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition? Seeing that. Any comments, questions? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion on Article Ten, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article Ten passes unanimously. Mayor, a motion for Article Eleven, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer $10,000 from the Police Communication Wages Account to the Police Wage Account to pay a portion of retroactive wages back to July 1, 2018 due to a new union contract agreement.
Motion made or second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Finance Committee recommends simple majority. Who would like to speak on this?
So, as I stated earlier, we had received a grant for communication wages from the state. And we were, so we were able to take some money from that wage account to fund any retro pay for the year FY 20 that the police-union agreement just got ratified and voted on. And this will cover the piece for the FY 20 year from July 1 through this current payroll period. So, we'll be able to transfer these funds into that grant and relieve that so the police can use it. We won't have to take any money from anywhere else.
Thank you. Anyone wanting to speak in opposition? Seeing none, any comments, any questions? We're going to vote. All those in favor of the motion on Article Eleven, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Motion for Article Eleven passes unanimously. Mayor, a motion for Article Twelve, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer appropriate $25,000 from free cash to the Police Wage Account to pay a portion of retroactive wages from July 1, 2018 to, due to new union contract agreement.
Motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to address this?
Vicki Morrow, Palmory Manor Road, Town Accountant. The chief and I both did our own calculations as to what the potential of the retro would be for FY 19, which is a whole fiscal year that we've been through. And we need approximately $25,000 to cover that retro pay for those union agreements that we just signed.
Thank you. Anyone who wants to speak in opposition? Any comments, questions? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article Twelve, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article Twelve passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article Thirteen, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer slash appropriate $5,000 from free cash to the Tree Warden Expenses Account to fund the removal and trimming of additional trees during fiscal year 2020.
Motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to address this?
Ed Gibson, Town Administrator. Ron Lauren, our Tree Warden, was unable to be here tonight. So, just like to let you know that originally in the fiscal year 20 budget, there was $8,000 appropriated to trim, remove trees that were dangerous or diseased or dying in the town way. Due to the number of storms we've had already this year, that $8,000 has been just about almost depleted to this point in time. There are still trees that are on the list for the Tree Warden to be taken down, and we still don't know what will occur in the next four or five months of the remainder of this fiscal year. So, we're asking to supplement the budget by $5,000 so the Tree Warden can do what he needs to do for trees that need to be either removed or trimmed in the remainder of the, this fiscal year as needed.
Thank you. Anyone who wants to speak in opposition? Any comments, any questions? Finance Committee recommends simple majority. All those in favor of the motion in Article Thirteen, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article Thirteen passes unanimously. Mayor, a motion for Article Fourteen, please?
Mr. Moderator, move that the town vote to transfer slash appropriate $16,328.60 from free cash to the Health Director Wage Account to fund the position through the remainder of the fiscal year.
Motion made or second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Finance Committee not recommends, and simple majority. Who would like to speak in favor of this, please?
I will. Shelley O'Connell, Seven Kyne Circle, Chair of the Board of Health. We are looking for the town to approve and vote.
A little closer.
And vote for this article. Due to if it does not get voted on, we will have to close our doors in the Board of Health. We are coming into our busiest time of year, and we really would like this to be passed. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to speak in opposition? Nobody wanting to speak in opposition, so open it up to the floor.
Maureen Groden, H. Sherrillane. I'm not speaking in opposition. I have a question for the Board of Health. The wage line for Health Department wages for the Board of Health went from $20,975 in 2013, progressively up to 24.2, 25.9, 37, and then 46. So, from 2013, it was at $21,000. And by 2017, it was up to 46.7. So, I was just wondering if someone could explain that increase, and can this increase be absorbed in the current Board of Health budget?
Mr. Moderator, Charlie Kenecke, Valley Road. I'm on the Board of Health, have been for the last three months or so. I've done an evaluation relative to what's going on. Basically, this request has been in the original budget back this past year. It was taken out by the Board of Selectmen, and it's been reintroduced, basically because of the law. Mr. Gibson can explain to you further about this. As for the increase in pay relative to the operation of the Board of Health, the Board of Health has been woefully underpaid for numerous years. I can tell you this directly because I used to be the State District Health Officer and used to serve over 100 communities in Western Massachusetts and know what people get paid and what their responsibilities and roles are. This is necessary for us to function. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Ed Gibson, Town Administrator. Back in fiscal year 19, the Massachusetts Pay Equity Law.
Just a little closer, Ed. The speakers in the back aren't the best.
Back in fiscal year 2019, the Massachusetts Pay Equity Law went into effect. The Board of Health asked me to, under the Pay Equity Act, to do an analysis of the education training experience required for the Health Director as compared to our Building Commissioner. I used the Attorney General's Pay Equity Guide to do that analysis, and I consulted with Town Council. I found, my finding was that basically while not totally equivalent, the Health Director's pay rate should be 87% of the Building Commissioner's pay rate. It was not. Back in, at last winter's special town meeting, the town meeting approved a transfer of funds that allowed us to increase the hourly wage of the Health Director to that 87% mark as compared to the Building Commissioner. But since then, we have not put any extra money aside to also pay for a full fiscal year at 32 hours a week for 52 weeks a year that individual is working. So, this $16,000 in funding would basically finish off the analysis of pay equity. It would not only put the hourly wage at 87% of the Building Commissioners, but it would fund this position for 52 weeks a year, which in my professional opinion is the next step that the town should take.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak? Just come right up to the microphone. You don't need to wait until somebody's in line.
Good evening. I'm Barbara Laflambe, 20 Cook Road. I would like to know, what is the hourly pay rate for this particular position?
Okay, we have a question. Who would like to answer that? Vicki's on deck.
I believe it's $29.16.
Thank you. That answer your question? Thank you. Okay, next.
Beth Russell Smith, 84 High Street, Southampton. I'm kind of short. My question is, has this pay equity assessment been done of all director positions in the town?
I believe the answer is no. Ed, you can answer from where you are.
You're correct, no.
I am correct, no, has not.
So, I know we want to be fair. So, is there a plan to do this so that other directors, say the library director, are being paid fairly?
Good question. Who would like to answer that? Is there a plan for the other directors in town?
So, why would we be doing this? Just, this doesn't sound like a good overall, well-defined plan. I'm wondering why.
We have a microphone on, I'm moving, yes. We have an answer coming.
So, I just want to let you know that at the last Select Board meeting, we had a presentation by the Chair of the PQB, Art Lawrence, and he basically presented the findings of the PQB, which grouped the various employees in town. This was based on a Jacob study. So, they went through the very laborious process of going through and looking at the different positions in town and grouped them according to similar characteristics. And certainly, the recommendation from the PQB is that the town of Southampton begin the process of looking across the board at the pay structures of all the different departments. In particular, the recommendation was to start at the first level of employees, so custodian, van driver, and so forth. So, right now, the process is to have department heads review that with our town administrator during the budget cycle.
That answer your question?
So, if we're, if we're starting at, Beth Russell Smith, 84 High Street, Southampton. If we're starting at the bottom, why are we doing this for a director?
Yes. Ed, you can answer from the table.
Specifically, under the law, if someone believes that they may not be treated fairly or equitably, which in this case, the Board of Health brought it to the Select Boards in my attention. And so, under the law, that analysis has to be done, which I did.
Answer your question? Yep, thank you.
Michael Rosenberg, 144 East Street. Just for clarification, is this for funding for one position? Because I know in the past, it had been split between two people. And what would be the incremental increase if it was two positions to now one position?
Okay, we have a question. Who would like to answer? Mic's on the move.
This is for one position.
And Ed, it was a two-part question. The second part was, what would be the increment if it was for two positions? What would be the figure?
Let me try that. It's not, there's two separate positions there. This was just for the Board of Health Director.
Okay, because I know at one point, they were combined. They're now still.
No, two distinct positions. One position, I think, is roughly 10 hours.
Okay, thank you.
That answer your question? Good. Next?
Cindy Palmer, 71 Glendale Road. I noticed that the Finance Committee did not recommend this. I wonder if the Finance Committee or some representative could explain why they did not recommend this.
John LeBree, Finance Committee. We didn't recommend this, and we didn't recommend it before when it was coming from free cash. We don't want to set a precedence taking free cash for wages. We did recommend this for the 2020 budget, to put it in the budget when we did the budget about nine months ago, and it got taken out by the Select Board.
Thank you. That answer your question? Next?
Janet Kane, Glendale Road, Chair of the Council on Aging Board. And I just am concerned that this will encourage the discrepancy from the COA Director, which is $20.40 an hour, to $29 and change is getting wider and wider. I just encourage that we not just start at the bottom and pay everybody equitably.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just want to clarify that when the PQB came to present to the Select Board, it was a recommendation that the town look at all the different classes and the pay. We're not necessarily starting anywhere. What's been recommended is that each department head, when they come and meet with the town administrator and present their budget request, that they try to incorporate in some of the changes within their own budget. So, not to say that we're starting anywhere. I think we, it was the recommendation in Art's presentation that we start somewhere.
Thank you.
John LeBree, Valley Road, Finance Committee. I agree with the last speaker at this microphone. Many of our town employees are well-underpaid, all throughout the, all throughout the offices of Town Hall, Library. Look these wages up. I don't know why a lot of them stick around. I guess they're just dedicated. They don't make a lot of money.
If this article fails, the Board of Health is going to be in no position but to close the Board of Health's office for the remainder of the year.
Barbara Laflambe, 20 Cook Road. I believe, having been in town for a number of years, that it's critically important that all departments know at the beginning of the year what their budget amounts are, and that they make the efforts to remain within that. Not to do so is unfair to other departments that do strive to stay within their budget amounts. So, I would recommend that we not approve this article.
Thank you. Anyone else? Don't wait for me to ask anyone else. They're right up there to the mic.
Mary Ann Carrasco, Glendale Road. I am at a loss to understand how we're in February, and this is a vote to increase pay to meet equity. And if we vote it down, the Board of Health is closed for the rest of the year. I need more information.
We're not voting on that.
No, but you're, we're voting on increasing the pay of the director, correct?
We're voting on move that the town vote to transfer appropriate $16,328.60 from free cash to the Health Director Wage Account to fund the position through the remainder of the fiscal year.
Okay, the fiscal year is.
That's all that we're voting on.
Okay, and the fiscal year is June 30, correct? That's the last day?
30th, July 1st.
Yeah, okay. So, we're in February. I need more information as to why the, if we vote this down, it would result in the Board of Health closing until the end of the fiscal year.
That isn't attached to this. I have to be very fair and clear. That is, we're not voting on whether the Board of Health remains open or doesn't.
Okay.
We're only voting on the motion.
So, were those back said or not?
I don't, I don't recognize anybody shouting, "That's rude." Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name's Ken Boucher from Peacock Road. Yeah, Mr. Knickie came out with a statement indicating that before the health will cease, this doesn't pass. Can he clarify this? Is it going to be a walkout? What's going on? All of a sudden it's.
We can't entertain what might or might not happen.
Is this not pertaining to that money? Are we offended or not? Is it not pertaining to the money that's in this article? Other than that, then that remark was not warranted.
Thank you. You had a question, Michael?
Just for a historical perspective, whether it was a year ago or a year and a half ago, we had a conversation on this floor about hearsay and making statements in front of the public that may or not be true. So I'm just asking, is the statement true or not true? It was a very long discussion. I know there was back and forth between the Speaker and the moderator at the time.
Any discussion about what a committee or a board or a commission does needs to be voted by that commission. A member of a board, of a committee, of a commission can't speak for that.
So it could just be hearsay?
In fact, when someone made a motion a couple of years ago, he was very clear, although he was speaking for his commission, he made it, the motion, for himself.
Just trying to get clarification on what's said at this microphone, if we take it for fact or we take it for hearsay, and where that line is. Because it is important.
This is why I stated every meeting since 2005, simply because someone states something doesn't necessarily make it true.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? You've been up twice. I have to be fair to everyone. You have five minutes when you're up and you're able to speak twice. Vicki Morrow.
Vicki Morrow, Palmer and Metaro Town Accountant. I guess to clarify and to answer hopefully a few questions, is if you were to calculate what is remaining in the budget, the Board of Health, by the wages that's left in there, can only be opened until the end of February. If there's no money left in the budget, I cannot pay anybody any more money. They can't work. There's no money left. It's illegal to spend. So that's why Mr. Knickie would tell you that the Board of Health will close. I only have enough wages to pay the current rate at the hours until the end of February.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak? Rainey, how many times you been up?
Just to clarify, there are three paying positions in the Board of Health. One is an animal counter or inspector. The other one is the health agent, and another one's the health director. So can you clarify, is there enough money to pay the health agent and the animal counter for the rest of the fiscal year?
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak? Questions? Seeing none, we'll vote. Yes, sir.
It sounds to me like we're voting.
I like your name and your address so that we can be fair to everybody else.
39 Crookledge Road, Southampton. It sounds to me like we're voting on enough money to pay a salary through the rest of the year because we don't have enough money in that account, plus an increase. If this money is going to be able to keep that department open through the end of the year, it wouldn't be open through the end of the year. It would have to close in February. It means we didn't have enough money to begin with to pay the regular salary. So we're talking about supplementing the salary plus paying for an increase. How much of this is increase and how much is the additional salary to pay her through the rest of the year?
We have a question. How much is the additional salary, additional income, and how much is the, forgot the word? Anyone hear the question? Vicki? Ed? We have an answer coming.
None of this is an increase. It is all just to fund the hours to get to June 30th.
That answer your question? Good.
Shelley O'Connell, 7 Kinley Circle. I just want, there's a lot of people here that use a Sharps program in town, and if the Health Department has to close, that Sharps program will not be available to a lot of people that actually use that on a daily basis, on a weekly basis.
Thank you. Anyone else? Going once, going twice. We're going to vote and repeat the motion. Move that to town vote to transfer appropriate $16,328.60 from free cash to the Health Director Wage Account to fund the position through the remainder of the fiscal year. Finance Committee not recommended, simple majority. We're going to vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article 14, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay.
Nay.
Counters, come forward, please. Get your cards handy. You know, the cards that were given out? The yellow ones. The counters will come to the front of the room, and you'll be counting the bleachers also, counters, because others have moved in since my announcement. Does she hear what I'm saying? Okay. All right. All those in favor of the motion under Article 14, please indicate by raising your card high to be counted.
38.
38. 25.
45.
Huh?
45.
45, okay, sorry, that's why we do this. 45. Okay, put your cards down. Thank you. Those opposed to the motion under Article 14, please indicate by raising your cards. 16, 1-6?
1-6.
Huh?
Yes.
1-6.
33.
33. Okay, put your hands down. Motion under Article 14 passes 83 to 49 by majority. May your motion for Article 15, please.
Mr. Moderator. Move that the town vote pursuant to the provisions of GL Chapter 41, Subsection 1B, to change the position of elected treasurer-collector to an appointed position to be appointed by the select board for a term of up to three years, provided however, that such change shall not take effect unless it is also approved by the voters at the 2020 annual town election.
Motion made, or second?
Second.
Simple majority is needed. Yes, we've seen this several times before in historic town meetings. Who would like to speak on this, please?
And currently, the treasurer-collector for the town of Southampton is responsible for about $17 million worth of funds. And in a business that is this size, the treasurer-collector really should, you know, needs to be an experienced, educated, qualified person. I'm not saying that our current treasurer-collector is not, because she definitely is. You know, however, you don't know how long that person will stay and work and, you know, who might run for elected office afterwards. But in today's world, the treasurer-collector is responsible for doing the borrowings, the bondings, the deposits, responsible for the payroll, the payroll taxes for the town. So that individual really needs to know not only municipal law, state law, but finance. So to have the ability to have the best possible qualified candidate in the town of Southampton, this is put before the town meeting for a vote to change that position from an elected position to an appointed position so that the town can be insured to get the best qualified candidate.
Thank you. Who would like to speak in opposition?
Elaine Buckley, Manhattan Road. It just seems, from my perspective, that electing a person, I understand people that vote for someone don't necessarily study the qualifications of the person, but it does seem to be a more democratic way of filling that position because everybody in Southampton gets to do whatever research they want to do and cast their vote, whereas if it's appointed, we have a handful of also elected people making that decision on our behalf. So that's just my opinion.
Thank you.
George Rankort, Whitelof Road. This has been brought up seven times so far, as I can remember. I've stood out there with a sign opposing it, and it's been defeated at least four times that I've worked at it. The sad thing is, what do we have left to vote for in this town? The treasures that we've had have all worked out. We had a really, the last treasurer left because of offer of a higher wage, and the town couldn't meet, there wasn't any demands, but it couldn't come up with another $20,000. I think we should at least control some part of this government that we have in this town, be able to vote for these things. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Next.
Okay, I'm not the short one. John Martin, 106 Clark Street, and I'm on the select board. I've been talking about this for a number of years. Fortunately, we have Jen Day, who's the current treasurer-collector, and Donna Whitley before that, who have both been very good. But people have been here a little while. You've got to remember the election before that because the town get to vote only on the candidates that decide to run. In the election before that, we had a person that was, had a trade, he was a trade person, a painter, I believe, and we had a person who was six months in the clerk's office. So you had the choice of two people who really didn't know anything about the treasurer-collector's office. And an elected official, a paid elected official, they don't have any set hours, set duties. They run their own job. They don't report to anybody. The select board can't do anything if the issues come up. You've got to go back to the people and get 600 people to take that person out of office. So there's no supervision at all. So if you're electing five members of the select board, those are the people that would hire the most qualified person. So you're not losing your vote. You're designating it to the select board, and if you trust the select board, then you have to trust them to have a treasurer-collector. And I like to look at it, we're a $17 million business, and if we were, say, a plant that had $17 million in revenue and our treasurer-collector left, you don't go out to the warehouse and say, "Anybody interested in this job is paying $60,000 a year? Come on, we'll give you the job." You go out and you take applications and you hire the best qualified person for the job, and that's all we're asking to do. We're not looking at taking away votes. We're asking you to put it in the hands of the select board, and you have the right to elect whoever you want. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Vicki Morrow, Palmer and Metaro Town Accountant. I would say personally, I agree with having this an appointed position. As John Martin mentioned, we had two, since I've been here, very qualified treasurers. But if you elect a person in that position who can't do that job, it falls on me because I have to pick up what they do, because if they, I rely on what they do to do my job in order to get you the free cash so you can spend money, so you can buy capital pieces of equipment or fix buildings and whatnot. If I don't have someone in that job that can do that job, then I can't do my job, and you guys don't get to do what you need to do for the town to grow.
Thank you. Next.
Gary Swanson, East Street. I agree pretty much with the idea of what John said earlier about having, you need qualified people in. I agree with what Vicki said. My only problem here is that it all rests on our faith in the ability of the Board of Selectmen to make a sound, rational, good judgment in their hiring. I personally do not have that level of faith in our Board of Selectmen. I suggest we vote against this thing.
Next.
Jay Thomas, 7 East Street. This is an election year, and right about this time, I'm reminded that the will of the people sometimes goes awry, and sometimes, and sometimes appointees are not appropriate. And that's having a lot of effect on my decision. So I'd really rather the people elect the town treasurer. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Just one thing I forgot, but just to address somebody who was just up here. It's an election year. Every year, one to two people turn over on the select board, and it's the select board, not the Board of Selectmen. That was changed just to identify the folks on the board. So you go out there and vote for somebody who has qualifications. I mean, if you don't like my policies and procedures, you know, you vote for somebody else. That's how it works here, and I think that's the best way. But getting back to what I was saying before, three elections ago, we had a person that was six months clerk, and she tried her best. I mean, that's the best I can say. But when Donna Whitley took over, there was over $200,000 in back taxes that weren't collected because this particular person didn't have the knowledge and the expertise. So somebody's saying 600,000, but the point is hundreds of thousands of dollars that our money, taxpayer money, that wasn't being collected, that could have went to our budget. So if you don't have the person with the knowledge and the experience, we're going to go back down that same trail again. So don't vote for people you like. Vote for people that are going to do the job well, and you don't always have to agree with them. Just vote based on their experience and what you want them to do, and tell them what you want them to do.
Thank you. Next.
Sorry about the mic.
No problem. Janet Kane, Glendale Road. First of all, I'd just like to say that I think our select board has done, over the years, a great job in electing or hiring people like Vicki Morrow, Ian Illingsworth, John Workman. I think they've done an outstanding job of bringing people into this town that live perhaps outside of the town, some of them. And if we actually get to hire someone in the community, outside of the community, our pool of applicants is expanded greatly. I mean, right now, again, we are so lucky, we had Donna and we have Jen, but when Jen gets that great offer to go to another community because they can search outside of their town, then who are we going to have next? And we want to be able to really, I believe, expand the pool of applicants that we can look into.
Thank you. Next.
Tammy Walunas, 298 College Highway. Mr. Moderator, there's nothing preventing Jennifer from applying to this job.
That's not you, someone. Does not use someone's name?
There's nothing preventing the person holding this job to apply if this was passed and gone through. She can, that person can still go through the whole interview policy and show that that person is qualified for this, correct? We're not prohibiting her.
You're not here to question me. You're here to give an opinion.
Fine.
No. Anybody else want to give a comment? Question? Seeing none, we'll vote. You were first. Well, sort of.
I don't know. This could be, is Elaine, Elaine Buckley, Manhattan Road. I'm wondering if we had an appointed treasurer, would they be able, as opposed to somebody that's not appointed, would they have a, do a better job at overseeing, you know, all the salaries of everybody so that we wouldn't be asked to fund $16,300 for a health director? Would that be a position, would we be more secure as a town, knowing that everybody was going to get paid and nobody was going to lose their jobs and departments weren't going to be closed? I'm just wondering.
You can't predict the future.
I don't know. That's a comment. I don't know if anybody can respond.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments? Questions?
It's not really a function of the treasurer's department. That's part of the budget process. The treasurer is responsible for collecting all the cash, depositing the money, doing the bank reconciliations, borrowing, that kind of thing.
Thank you.
They do make sure that they get paid properly.
Answer your question. Great.
I just wanted to mention, too, that if this is approved, that she would still finish the end of her term and then could apply to be appointed.
Thank you. We're going to vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article 15, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it. Passes by majority. May I hear a motion for Article 16, please?
Mr. Moderator, moved at the town vote to transfer $2,000 from the Community Preservation Fund to the Historical Commission to purchase and install a flagpole in the area of the historical one-room schoolhouse at Conan Park to add to the historical appearance of the school. Said some to be transferred from Community Preservation Surcharges Historic Preservation Account.
Motion made. Do I hear a second? Motion made and seconded. Who would like to speak on this? And this Finance Committee recommended simple majority.
The big bad wolf huffed and puffed and blew down the flagpole that has been there for many years, so we need a new one.
Very good. Anyone want to speak in opposition? Any other comments? Don't wait for permission. Come right up to the mic.
Jim Seeny, High Street. I don't speak in opposition. I have a question, two questions. Will the flag have a light on it, or will it be taken down each night and put up each
Question?
Flag we intend to purchase will have a light.
Answer your question?
Clarification.
Okay, ahead.
Will the light function throughout the whole night until the sun rises in the morning? In other words, some of the solar doesn't work all night.
Is it going to be on a timer, in other words?
That's a good question. I don't know. It is, the one being considered is a solar-powered light. So whether it will last in the winter all night, I don't know, but we will ask before we place a purchase order.
Thank you. The answer is, we don't know. We'll wait until the sun, you know, runs out of power. Go ahead.
Jim Seeny, High Street. For me, that's important to know.
I'm some, I've got a fan going on that I don't need.
Jim Seeny, High Street. For me, that's important to know if it does or it does not, because if it doesn't shine a light on the flag throughout the night, I don't think that's the way a town should post a flag. So that's an important piece of clarification.
Okay. Anybody want to answer that question?
Well, I don't have a direct answer because I don't know. But again, we would not place a purchase order until that was clarified. Secondly, I don't, there are several flags in town. I cannot say that they are all lit all night.
Anybody else want to comment? Pro con, step right up to the mic. Questions? Seeing none, we're going to vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article 16, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion under Article 16 passes by majority. May I hear a motion for Article 17, please?
Mr. Moderator, I moved at the town vote to transfer the care, custody, and control of that property located at 93 College Highway, described in a deed recorded with the Hampshire Registry of Deeds in Book 6098, page 95, containing eight acres, more or less, from the Select Board for general municipal purposes, and authorize the Select Board to convey said property on such terms and conditions and for such consideration as the Select Board deems appropriate, including reserving such drainage easements as the town may require to execute such documents as may be necessary to carry out the purpose of this article.
Motion made or seconded?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to address this, please? Don't be shy. Someone from the select board has been designated weeks ago to speak on this. Would one of By the way, Finance Committee recommended simple majority.
Maureen Groden, Cheryl Lane. This property was sold to the town. I'm not sure exactly what year that was, but it was sold to the town for a dollar. And the purpose of that was because there is a persistent erosion problem that involves the farm, which is now the Fletcher Farm. And so years back, the, this involves the history with the tire dump and all of that. But what happened was basically the, the land was turned back to the town, or turned to the town for the purposes of the town obtaining funding at that time to address the problem with erosion. At that particular time, the funding was available to municipalities and not to private citizens. This transition back, or making this land available for purchase, is a reversal of that, or at least a transition of this because right now, the Mass Department of Environmental Resources, is that, is that right, Ed? Has actually, there are funds available now for private management of erosion in this particular land. So the request has been made to offer this land up so that the erosion, the persistent erosion problem can be addressed because the funds are now available privately and not from municipality.
Thank you. Would anybody like to speak in opposition? And this is your map, our map for this article, Article 17 map. And then the Peter Stern trustee for Owen and Bertha Falls, that's the map that applies for this motion under this article. Yes?
Christina Madsen, Rattle Hill Road. It's my understanding that under the APR program, one of the requirements is that the land must be farmed. And the town is not farming this land. It seems as though it has been a liability to the town. And to be returned to private hands will mean that it will return to its farming state, and it will be improved.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one else? Questions? Comments? We're going to vote. The motion for Article 7, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article 17 passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article 18, please?
Mr. Moderator, take no action.
We have a motion to negative, take no action. Do I hear a second?
Second. First paragraph, yeah.
Mr. Moderator, we received a letter today from Arlevac Associates, Inc. It's addressed to you. Dear Mr. Floyd, on behalf of our client, Emmanuel Sardina of American Dream Realty LLC, we are hereby requesting to withdraw without prejudice Article 18 of the special town meeting warrant for February 11, 2020, for the amendment to zoning bylaw, amendment of Zone Map bylaw, section 3B, for the two parcels at 173 and 175, College Highway, Assessors' Map 24, Parcels 2 and 57.
Thank you. We have a motion to take no action and second. Any comments? Seeing none, all those in favor to take no action, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Because we have no purview here to decide. Okay. It's unanimous. We're passing over Article 18. May I hear a motion for Article 19, please? Take no action. That's my, we're taking no action for Article 18. Motion for Article 19, please.
Mr. Moderator, I moved at the town vote to amend the Southampton zoning map, ZBL section 3B, by changing the zoning designation of a parcel of land consisting of 14.7 plus or minus acres and located at the southwest corner of College Highway and Valley Road, also identified on Assessors' Map 39, Parcel 26, and as shown on a plan prepared by Heritage Surveys, Inc., quote, "proposed zone change area, industrial park IP to commercial highway CH, map 39, parcel 26, Eugene R. Labrie College Highway and Valley Road, Southampton, Mass." Close quotes, "from the present zoning designation of industrial park IP to commercial highway CH."
Motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. The planning board recommends Finance Committee, not within purview. It needs a two-thirds majority. Who would like to speak on this, please? Planning board. Anybody here from the planning board? Great.
Cindy Palmer, 71 Glendale Road. I am a member of the planning board, and the planning boards.
A little closer so everybody can hear.
The planning board did vote to support the zone change.
Anybody else? Anybody want to speak in opposition? Freeze frame. Anybody else? Open the floor.
I, I'm Cindy Palmer, 71 Glendale Road, and I also am on the open space committee. The open space committee reviewed this, and there are a lot of considerations here. First of all, this is not about developing our town. This is about having our town have something to say about how it's developed. This is currently already zoned industrial and not zoned commercial. At the planning board hearing, we asked the agent for the owners to give us a little sense for what would be developed, and maybe that can be answered. But right now, I know there's a reservation on the standpoint of the open space committee, and I'd like the town to consider not passing this at this time until we hear a little more about what would be developed. This is the gateway to our community, scenic gateway, is how it's referred to in our master plan. And I think we have the right to really think about this, Mr. Moderator and everybody, to decide how is it we want to see our town developed and not just, say, change the zoning and make it available for commercial development.
Thank you. And by the way, in one of your handouts, this is the map for this particular article. Says Article 19. It looks like this. It also says, "proposed zone change area, industrial park to commercial highway." Who else would like to speak?
Jim Labrie, Gun Road, Southampton. The property is currently industrial. And I'll go through just a few of the uses that are allowed by right in an industrial zone. So coming into your town, these are things that are already allowed. There are manufacturing, construction, industrial, and supplies, freight terminal and warehousing, bus passenger terminal, permitted use. Just go down and get a building permit and build these. Other transportation services, it says, whatever that means, wholesale trail, trade distribution, open storage of materials and equipment, and there's a whole bunch of other things that are permitted. My brother Eugene, co-owner of the property, was approached by a pub-type business that wanted to open a little restaurant there. And we're like, well, it's industrial. We can't do that there. So we started thinking, what could we do with this barn? It's a really nice barn. We vested a lot in a new roof and floor on the inside, and we're trying to come up with a use for it. And one of the biggest changes, one of the biggest changes that we feel that if this is commercial highway, it's permitted to have a retail establishment selling principally convenience goods, retail establishment selling general merchandise, eating, drinking places, including drive-in establishments. These are things that are along the line of what we would like to do on that property. So we feel it would fit better with that type of use, but it's ultimately up to the people. So we're just putting it forward.
Thank you. Next.
April West Strong Road. I am on the Board of Assessors, and currently, the way this article is written, it is referencing map 39, parcel 26, which at, in the assessor records is 35 point something acres. So it does not, this article does not say a portion of that, and I'm kind of uncomfortable with the way it's written. Thank you.
Thank you.
Amy Daniels, 415 College Highway. Amy Daniels, 415 College Highway. So there was a card that went out to the town about the scenic gateway, which is very much a part of my family's heart. However, it kind of gives the impression that this picture is the land that we're voting on this evening, and it is not. None of.
Amy, I can sort of hear you, but whatever you want to say, however you want to turn, make sure it all goes in here.
So none of the property that we're voting on this evening is actually in the scenic gateway picture that was sent to the town.
Thank you. Next.
Christina Madsen, Rattle Hill Road.
Closer, closer.
Christina Madsen, Rattle Hill Road. I was a member of the original master plan committee, and now I'm on the master plan implementation committee. And I'm just going to read the few sentences about this particular section of town.
Closer to the mic.
I shall. Thank you. The town's 2008 open space plan identified one location where, quote, "an extraordinary panorama offers residents and visitors alike a strong character of Southampton and needs to be preserved," unquote. This area on College Highway near the Westfield Line offers one of the more spectacular views of Mount Tom and the surrounding 65 mountains and hills. The location is also a primary gateway into Southampton from the south and provides travelers along College Highway with the first glimpse of the community.
Thank you.
May I continue?
Oh, I'm sorry. You looked at me as if you were saying.
Oh, no. So what I would like to say about this is that no one that I've spoken to.
Closer, closer, closer.
Really?
Yes.
Okay. No one that I've spoken to has really indicated that they know how to vote on this because there's not a sense that we, that we know exactly what the impact is going to be on the town. And I know it's zoned industrial now, but the infrastructure, the lack of infrastructure has kept it from being developed. has kept it from being developed, I believe. There is a great deal of wetlands in that area. Certainly, 14 acres is a greater area than just the Red Barn, so what is being requested, it would imply that more than just the development of the Red Barn would take place. So I'm not comfortable voting to make this transition to commercial without having a stronger sense of what will become of what is designated as a very scenic area. So I would urge voters to vote likewise until we have a more certain idea of the impact on that College Highway area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jane Rothschild, Cold Spring Road, and I'm speaking in opposition to this motion. I concur with what Cindy Palmer said about not knowing the development, but I think that zoning is one of the tools that the community has to control and manage development. And before we consider changing the zoning on this parcel, I think the community needs to have a broader and more robust conversation about how we want to manage development of that part of town. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Gary Swanson, East Street. I just want to throw a little bit of common sense into the pot here. We're whining about not having enough money, yet all we can talk about is putting more land into open space that we can't tax. Somewhere along the line, a planning board decided that this should be the area in town that's designated to provide some of that assessed value so that we can get some tax money in town, and they made it industrial. We're not talking about changing from an open space zoning, if there was such a thing, to a commercial zoning. We're talking about changing from an industrial zoning to a commercial zoning. We've got somebody who is willing to come in if we make this, you know, change in zoning, who's willing to come in and give us some more assessable property and some more tax revenue. I'm all in favor of making this change, and I suggest that we use a little bit of common sense and do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
John Broder, 8 Madeline Way. I couldn't agree more than the last speaker. I mean, as a resident of this town since 2000, all I've heard is people complain about Proposition Two and a Half overrides, and we can't do this, and we can't do that. We have areas of land that are not valuable open space. They are on main commercial corridors, heavily traveled, ideal spots so that we can get some of the revenue that we cannot get from subdivisions, from housing that has children in it who tax more of our schools. Then we complain that we've got to do a Proposition Two and a Half override. But then we complain that we have to save everything. You can't save everything. You have to pick your battles, and picking them along a corridor that has seven Bs within 100, you know, or, sorry, a half a mile, Cumberland Farms. It's got a garage across the street. That is, if that's our gateway to our town that you're really worried about saving? I think what you're talking about saving is the farm that you see to the right that has a beautiful view of Mount Tom, not the one that looks up the hill and sees an industrial building to the back, which was a great asset to our town as well. People in this town have to use their heads. They need to go and look at what they want. Do you want to have higher taxes, or do you want to have a commercial base that reduces what you have to pay? Because we can tax people who do not take from the town. They do not require extra teachers, extra square footage. Just a simple thought.
Thank you. Next.
Elaine Buckley, Manhan Road. There's other zoning-
Get that a little bit more down, the angle, that's it.
I believe there's other zoning to consider besides a commercial or industrial. I mean, it could still be zoned for residential and thereby bring in tax revenue and not make it commercial. I think people that are worried that, you know, it will become very commercialized are worried about the long-term, long-term status of Southampton, how it's going to look, is it going to attract people to come here? Is it, is it going to maintain its rural character, the kind of character that it brought us here in the first place? I've been here since 1983. So I'm just suggesting that I think we need some time on this to consider other options because, you know, once it's voted, it's voted, and Southampton can change, and maybe a lot of us don't want it to.
Thank you.
Two points, and Bob Coles, 181 College Highway. Two points in rebuttal. We do have a master plan. The master plan recognizes the need for commercial properties, but it also says that we should have a choice as to where that will be. That master plan was worked on by a lot of people, is currently still being worked on, approved here at town meeting. Secondly, I'm not sure I totally buy into the fact that for Southampton, commercial properties are the panacea to reduce our taxes. My guess is that better than 50%, probably better than 60% of the people that live in Southampton do not have kids. They're empty nesters, they're old agers like me, do not have kids that are sucking up the school budget. So, so where does developing more commercial properties bring us lower taxes? Secondly, take a look at Hadley. It would not be long, 20, maybe 30 years, before Route 10 in Southampton starts looking like Route 9 in Hadley.
Thank you. Next.
Maureen Groden, Cheryl Lane. I think what we're trying to say is that we want to look to see what the town wants to do with various lands. Thursday night, we're having a presentation or a look at the open space committee. We're having Mark Wamsley from Kestrel come out. Ideally, what this town needs is to have a map that says that these are priority lands for keeping open space because of either water protection or wildlife protection or because of vernal pools or whatever. And right now, we don't exactly have that, so we're in the process of doing that. In the meantime, our opportunities are to look at zoning and to say that this is an appropriate place for residential versus commercial versus industrial. And I think right now, there's a lot of questions about this particular motion. And for those of you that don't know, our actually taxes went down last year, mostly because of retired bond.
Thank you. Anyone else?
John, John Labrie, Valley Road. Don't lose sight of the fact that this property is zoned industrial right now, and the property owners could go get permits tomorrow to put up whatever they want that fits the industrial window. So scenic views or not, can't stop that.
Thank you.
Nancy Ruschio, 76, Moosebrook Road. Just wanted to ask a question about tax break that was voted on, I think in the affirmative, maybe a year or two or three ago for an industrial park that was just off maybe Valley Road or the road across from it, and wondering if a new commercial space or an industrial park would get that same break from the town.
Do you have a question, Vicki? Is that a question you can answer? Thank you.
Vicki Morrow, Palmeri Metta Road, Town Accountant. I would say as long as they presented that to the town, you know, if that came up again, you could come up with a new agreement which would be voted on the, for the town and the select board. That could possibly happen.
Answer your question? I'm not saying no, so I assume it will. Anybody else? Any comments, questions? We're going to vote, and we're going to vote with our cards. Counters, please come forward. Counters, please come forward. We need a two-thirds majority. It needs an exact number unless it's unanimous. Believing it may not be unanimous, we're going to count. All those in favor of the motion, Article 19, please indicate by raising your card high to be counted. Keep your cards up. Okay, put your cards down.
16, 1-6.
Repeat?
16, 1-6.
1-6, got it.
47.
47. All those opposed of the motion under Article 19, please raise your cards, hold them high. Keep them up. Are we good? Put your hands down. Thank you.
33.
38.
Motion under Article 19 fails. 53, 71. Mayor motion for Article 20, please. And we're going to be reading the article because it's long, and then the motion will be read. Okay. The total was 53, 71. We needed a two-thirds majority.
63.
Sorry? 63? All right, my bad.
63.
This is why we do it out loud. My bad, I added wrong. It still fails, but 63 to 71, that's the count. Thank you for all those who caught me on that. Article 20, please.
Mr. Moderator, to see if the town will vote to amend Article 1 of the town's general bylaws entitled Town Meeting as follows or take any other action relative thereto. Article 1, Town Meeting. Replace section 1, quote, "The annual election of town officers shall be held on the third Tuesday in May of each year. The annual meeting of the town shall be held on the first Tuesday in May commencing at 7:00 PM in the evening, and if not completed in a reasonable time prescribed by the moderator, shall continue on successive evenings beginning at 7:00 PM until its conclusion excluding Sundays and holidays with-"
Hold it, hold it. I urge those leaving now to reconsider and stay. We have a quorum of 50, no longer 25. We get below 50, we're sunk. Thank you. Please continue.
Okay. Excluding Sundays and holidays, end quote, with the following new section 1. Section 1. The annual town meeting, the annual meeting of the town shall be held on the first Tuesday in May commencing at 7:00 PM in the evening, and if not completed in a reasonable time prescribed by the moderator, shall continue on successive evenings beginning at 7:00 PM until its conclusion excluding Sundays and holidays. The annual election of town officers shall be held on the third Tuesday of May of each year. Replace existing section 2, quote, "Warrants for all town meetings shall be served by posting attested copies of the same in six places in the town to include the town's website at least seven days before the time of holding an annual town meeting and at least 14 days before the time of holding a special town meeting," end quote, with the following new section 2. New section 2. "Warrants for all town meetings shall be posted in six places in the town, including the town's website, at least seven days in advance of the scheduled annual town meeting and at least 14 days in advance of a special town meeting." Replace existing section 3, quote, "A motion made in town meeting shall be reduced to writing when required by the moderator," end quote, with the following new section 3. Section 3. "After a motion is made orally in town meeting, it will be presented in writing when required by the moderator with copies provided to the town clerk and the town moderator." Replace existing section 4. "To vote on any question before the meeting shall be taken by use of the checklist if the moderator or the meeting by vote so orders," with the following new section 4. Section 4. "If the moderator or the meeting by majority vote so orders, a vote on any question at town meeting shall be conducted by paper ballot." Now we're inserting new section 5 as follows. Section 5. "Any town meeting article requiring bonding, the moderator shall require a paper ballot vote." Replace existing section 5, quote, "Articles in the warrant shall be acted upon in the order of their arrangement unless the meeting by vote otherwise determines," end quote, with the following new section 6. New section 6. "Articles in the warrant shall be acted upon in the order of their arrangement unless the meeting by majority vote revises the order in which the articles will be considered." And I'm passing the baton.
Thanks. Replace existing section 6, quote, "At all town meetings except meetings that are devoted exclusively to the election of officers, 50 legal voters shall be necessary to constitute a quorum, provided that a number less than a quorum may from time to time adjourn the same," end quote, with the following new section 7. Section 7. "At all town meetings, 50 registered voters shall be necessary to constitute a quorum to conduct business, provided that a number less than a quorum may from time to time adjourn the meeting." Replace existing section 7, quote, "The warrant for an annual or special town meeting may specify that the meeting is to be held in a suitable auditorium or other facility in any of the contiguous municipalities, and the town meeting may also vote to adjourn to such a facility if it deems appropriate," end quote, with the following new section 8. New section 8. "The warrant for an annual or special town meeting may specify that the meeting is to be held in an accessible auditorium or other facility in any of the surrounding municipalities, and the town meeting may also, by majority vote, adjourn to such a facility if it deems appropriate." Renumber existing- Renumber existing Section 8. A. "All speakers at town meetings shall be recognized by and address the moderator and shall face and speak directly to the voters in attendance in the meeting hall." And, B. "All public officials located at tables in the front of the hall shall face toward the voters and shall also stand and be recognized, recognized by and first address the moderator, and shall then also face and speak directly to the voters." And, C. "Speakers shall not address specific individuals within the hall nor engage in any rude behavior toward any individuals," end quote. This is the new Section 9. Renumber existing Section 9, quote, "The formal rules of evidence, including those relating to hearsay evidence, that apply at formal proceedings such as court trials, shall not be applied to town meetings inasmuch as their complexity makes it difficult, if not impossible, to apply consistently. Accordingly, duly-recognized speakers whose statements comport with requirements for decorum shall not be prevented from speaking by the moderator when the speakers are acting in good faith with the reasonable belief their statements are true and that their statements are material and pertinent to matters legitimately before the town meeting," end quote. This is the new Section 10. Insert, almost done. Insert a new Section 11 as follows. New Section 11. Candidates running for town offices secure a place on the ballot either by timely submitting valid nomination papers with a sufficient number of signatures of required voters or being so voted at the town caucus. A nonpartisan town caucus shall be held at least thirty-eight days prior to the annual town election as described in Mass. General Law Chapter 53, subsection 121. Note, there is a footnote that is not part of the bylaw. There was a footnote to Section 10 from the Attorney General in a letter dated August 3, 2018. The Attorney's General, Attorney General's comment was as follows, quote, "Cannot be applied in a manner that interferes with the moderator's authority to preside over and regulate town meeting, including the moderator's authority to request a person to be silent." See General Law Chapter 39, subsections 15 to 17.
Article read, I need the motion.
Motion. Move that the town vote to change the town bylaws to amend Article 1 of the town's general bylaws entitled Town Meeting by amending the existing language as noted, deleting existing language where noted, and adding new language shown in bold-faced text as set forth in Article 20 of the warrant for this February 11, 2020, special town meeting.
Motion made, or seconded?
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. This has to do with the moderator. The moderator needs to step down. Deputy Moderator Carl Keener will resume and take charge for this motion. I will be in the audience.
Good evening. I'll do the best I can as usual, which is, may not be up to par, but it's the best I can do. Who was, is there anyone that will speak to this article?
Yes, Francine Tishman, Glendale Road, member of the Select Board and also a member of the Bylaws Committee. I'm speaking to this article as well as the three articles that follow, which mark the beginning of a process to review and update, if needed, all of our existing town bylaws. I say this because it is a journey that we will travel for the next several annual and special town meetings. Our town meeting form of government requires voter exception of, acceptance of any, literally any changes in our bylaws. Simply changing an outdated word or two. Eliminating bylaws that are no longer needed. Updating local regulations so that they comply with state laws. Moving sections around and even in some cases, renumbering sections of the bylaws. As you will see tonight, even adding new bylaws. So having gone through the exercise of seeing all the, some, in some cases, minor changes, the fact remains that we have to go through this process word by word so that everyone is fully aware of the changes that we are proposing to make. The Bylaw Committee has worked with relevant committees and departments to make certain that they all agreed to the proposed changes before you this evening. Those drafts were then forwarded to the town administrator and on to the town council before being considered and approved by the Select Board for inclusion in tonight's warrant. The next and final step is what we, what is taking place tonight. Acceptance by town residents before they are sent to the Attorney General's office where they will become official. The changes of each bylaw are self-explanatory, as you, as you saw. The text shows all the changes in and of itself. The Bylaw Committee's midi meetings are open, and we welcome input from the community as we continue our work. Thank you.
Does anyone want to speak for or against this article?
Mr. Moderator, Robert Floyd, College Highway. Close to the mic, please. That is the best one yet. Am I blushing? Robert Floyd, College Highway. As town moderator, I have witnessed quite a number of years, those who are comfortable, those who are orators, those who are humble and feel uncomfortable facing the audience. Many face the town moderator. What I propose is to amend the motion under Article 20. I, Robert Floyd, move to amend the motion on Article 20 as follows by adding four words. Where it says Article 8, A, renumber existing Section 8, A rather. "All speakers at town meeting shall be recognized by and address the moderator, comma, and shall face and speak directly to the voters in attendance in the meeting hall," semicolon. I would like to add before the semicolon, or to the moderator, giving freedom, giving everybody a choice to face the audience, I understand those that do, and those who wish to address the moderator.
Could I please get that in writing? Do we have a second for this article, or for this amendment? I'm sorry.
I'll reiterate what I shared. I understand there are two types of voters. Those who wish to address an audience and look everybody in the eye, those who wish to address the town moderator, especially for questions or for guidance for making an amendment and, and the like. And if you're facing the audience, you can't be expecting guidance from the moderator out of your vision. So that's my reasoning. Four words, give every individual a choice.
Would anyone like to speak against this? Seeing none, we'll vote. We're voting. We're voting on the amendment. All in favor?
Aye.
All against? Seeing none, the amendment is approved. Now we'll vote.
Point of order, Mr. Moderator. You need to announce whether it was by majority or unanimous.
Okay, I, I'm sorry. The amendment is approved by majority. Pardon? Unanimous, I'm sorry. I'm a little rusty at this. So the amendment is approved, we'll now vote. I'm sorry.
Jim Seeny, High Street. I have a, a question that may turn into an amendment, I'm not sure. I don't understand the new Section 7. It reads ambiguous to me.
Okay, right, right now, right now we're voting.
So it's a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's a question. So it says fifty registered voters shall be necessary for a quorum, but then it says, "Provided a number less than a quorum may, from time to time, adjourn the meeting." Shouldn't may, shouldn't we, shouldn't may be struck and, struck and should be shall? It reads ambiguous to me with the word may.
I can't answer that question.
Can someone help me who's put this together, answer that question?
Robert Floyd, College Highway. We did have twenty-five, we now have fifty. Some towns have zero, and their attendance has increased. When we do not have fifty and you vote on a motion for an article, it's illegal, even if there was only forty-two in our audience. Once, cat's out of the bag, and then we now know there's forty-two, the meeting can't continue unless we can get people from the hallway. So there are only three concepts that can be done. One is to adjourn to future time or to recess, kind of the same thing, or to dissolve at the moderator's discretion. So sometimes when there isn't a quorum, people are asked to go knock on restroom doors and you know, other places and bring people in. And so that's why that ambiguous language is there. It can't automatically end the meeting. Thank you.
Does that answer your question? Does that?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any more comments? Then we'll vote on the article as amended. All in favor of the article as amended, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It's approved unanimously. Article 21.
Thank you, Deputy Moderator Carl Keener. It's really nice to take a break, sit down in the audience. Article 21. Do we hear a motion? Or actually, we're going to read the article?
We have to read the whole article.
Okay.
So Article 21, to amend the general town bylaws, a new Article 4, Town Administrator. To see if the town will vote to insert a new Article 4 entitled Town Administrator as follows into the town's general bylaws and renumber the subsequent sections of the general bylaws accordingly. Article 4, Town Administrator. The Town Administrator serves as an agent of the Select Board with duties and responsibilities delegated by the Select Board and delineated in the Town Administrator's contract which may not exceed three years. The Town Administrator may not hold elective office and may not be a voting member of any appointed town group. The Town Administrator acts as the town's chief administrative officer, chief procurement officer pursuant to Mass. General Law Chapter 30B, and chief financial officer. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to insert a new Article 4 entitled Town Administrator as set forth in Article 21 of the warrant for the February 11, 2020, special town meeting into the town's general bylaws and renumber the subsequent sections of the general bylaws accordingly.
Motion made, or seconded?
Seconded.
Finance Committee, not within purview, simple majority. Anyone like to speak additionally to this?
Arthur Lawrence, 113 Crooked Ledge Road. I'm also Chair of the Personnel Policy and Procedures Board. I have sort of some heartbreak over, over this article, and all of a sudden, we are now, I think, putting our Select Board, the current and the future, in sort of a box. Because what happens, I mean, we're becoming human resource people here. Why do we need a bylaw for a job that we have a job description? The job is classified, and the person has an employment contract. Makes no sense to me, and like I say, down the road, things may change. New boards may want to make changes to the responsibilities, may want to take, make changes to the number of years the, the person serves, et cetera, et cetera. I, I think we need to get out of the human resource business as far as bylaws.
Thank you. Anyone else?
John Labrie, Valley Road. One thing I see in this is that it may not exceed three years. When we're looking for a new town administrator at some point, not necessarily today, sorry, Ed, but trying to get somebody in for three years might be a problem when there could be a, it's their, it's their future, maybe twenty years, but limiting this to three years may be a problem to, for new hires.
Thank you.
Vicki Morrow, Palmary Meadow Road, Town Accountant. There are, there is already a Mass. General Law, which is Chapter 41, Section 108N, which already categorizes the Town Administrator contract to only be up to three years. So either you reference that in here potentially, you know, but there's already a Mass. General Law that says you can't go more than three years. The same thing with the sentence that says the Town Administrator may not hold elective office. If you look at MGL Chapter 41, 23A, it already states that in the Mass. General Law that they cannot be, hold elective office for the community. So we're kind of duplicating efforts, I think, on those two points.
Do you, are you wanting to make an amendment to that effect?
I'm just making a statement that it already exists.
Thank you. Next.
Okay, just, just to respond to the inclusion of the Town Administrator article here, is that it's a significant position within our government's organization here that up to now had not been referenced, and it's really just to reflect the, the structure of, of our town government and nothing more. So. Any other questions about that?
Thank you. Any questions? Comments? Seeing none, we're going to vote on the motion for Article 21. We need a simple majority. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article 21 passes by majority. May I hear about Article 22?
Amend general town bylaws, amend Article 4, Town Clerk, and renumber as 5. To see if the town will vote to amend the town, town's general bylaws, Article 4, entitled Town Clerk, by renumbering the section as Article 5 and renumbering subsequent sections of the general bylaws as may be necessary, and making the following additional changes shown bold below. As follows or take any or other action relative thereto. Article 5, Town Clerk. Insert a new Section 1 to read as follows. Section 1. "The Town Clerk is an elected position with a three-year term. He or she is a, is the official keeper of the town's records and the town's seal and serves as the main public records, public records access officer. He or she responds to inquiries from the public in a timely fashion as determined by mass state law." Move existing Section 1 to a Section 3 as stated below. Replace existing Section 2. Quote, "Section 2, the Town Clerk shall keep and cause to be permanently one or more files of the town reports," end quote. With the following new Section 2 to read as follows. Section 2. "The Town Clerk, as notary public, attest by signature and seal to bonds all borrowing, contracts, bylaws, resolutions, and any other documents requiring town certification. The Town Clerk records and certifies town meeting legislation, appropriations, and decisions of the Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals." Replace existing Section 3. Quote, "Section 3. He shall not allow original paper or documents of the town to be taken from his office except as they remain in his custody or by authority of law," end quote. With the following new Section 3 to read as follows. Section 3. "The Town Clerk is the chief election official and public records access officer and serves on the Board of Registars. The Town Clerk shall, immediately after every town meeting, notify or cause to be notified any person elected, chosen, or appointed..." notified any person elected, chosen, or appointed to any town office or to serve upon any board or committee of his election, choice, or appointment. Note, the second sentence of the new Section Three is from the existing Section One of Article Four. Add the following new sections as numbered. Section Four, the Town Clerk conducts the annual town census and prepares the street list of residents. Section Five, the Town Clerk submits general bylaws and zoning bylaws as approved at annual and/or special town meetings to the General, to the Attorney General for approval. Section Six, the Town Clerk issues marriage licenses, gasoline dispensing license, and dog licenses, and provides certified copies of vital records, births, marriages, and deaths. He or she also serves as the burial agent for the town. Section Seven, the Town Clerk shall permanently retain official town records as may be required to be retained by the Town Clerk according to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Records Retention Schedule and Town Bylaws. The Town Clerk shall not allow original paper docu, paper or documents of the town to be removed from the Town Clerk's office except as they remain in his or her custody or by authority of law. Note, the second sentence of the new Section Seven is derived from and substantially similar, although not identical, to the existing Section Three of Article Four, which provides, quote, "Section Three. He shall not allow original paper or documents of the town to be taken from his office except as they remain in his custody or by authority of law," end quote. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to change the town bylaws to amend Article Four of the town's general bylaws entitled, quote, "Town Clerk," end quote, by amending the existing language as noted, deleting existing language where noted, and adding new language shown in bold-faced text and renumbered, and renumber this article section as Article Five as set forth in Article 22 of the warrant for the February 11, 2020 special town meeting.
Motion made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, who would like to talk on this?
You okay? Okay.
Chain reaction.
So I surprised him, I'm sorry.
Everything's connected.
Zach Farrell, Mountain View Circle. I have a few items that, I'm noticing that as we're updating in the bold-faced language that we're looking to modernize some of the language that just refers to he male pronouns. Am I, am I, oh, okay. Am I good?
Yeah, go closer so they can hear.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. One item, Section Three actually was not, it does not look like it was updated, at least if we're trying to be consistent. The end of that, chosen or appointed to any town office or to serve upon any board or committee of his election, choice, or appointment. If we're looking to update and modernize the language, I would say that it would either be his or her, or my recommendation is to go beyond that and change all of the she or he, his or hers, to a gender-neutral pronoun such as they, which would just remove any sort of confusion about his or her, she or he, in any of this language, or the following Article 23 also has similar instances, or as they're looking at the bylaws to modernize them, just eliminate he, his, she, her, and just put a neutral they. I'm, since, this is my first time in front of the mics, I'm not sure how to work that, but...
You, you made a suggestion. If there's going to be any action based on your suggestion, it may need to be put into an amendment.
Okay.
If it isn't, then that's going to be discussed outside the meeting after the meeting, but if you do want it to be an amendment, I ask you now to word that amendment so I can share it with the town, so we can then vote to consider the amendment. It passes, it becomes part of the original motion, so...
Okay, I would like to promote, propose...
Then grab a pen and write.
Okay. Oh, I appreciate that, okay. I have, I have people helping me out. So, Section One, second sentence, we would...
Are you writing, or?
I have, I have somebody...
Teamwork. I'm checking, I'm checking, that's it. Good, teamwork.
I'd like to update the second sentence, starting with, in Section One, replacing she, he is the official keeper with they are the official keeper of town records. Following that in the same sentence after the comma, from she or he responds to they respond to inquiries. I'm sorry, okay. Well, can, can I make an amendment to replace she, he, he, all of the pronouns to replace them with they?
Only under this particular article.
Okay.
I believe...
I know, the, the next article also has.
Yeah, well...
All right. I'll work, I'll work on updating, but I don't want to keep everybody here, I know it's...
Technically, we'd have, yeah, I think it, I think you send a strong message either way.
Okay. All right. I've had a recommendation to replace Town Clerk instead of she or he to identify the, the person.
Okay, whatever you're doing and recommending, at least it's going to be in writing, so I can share the proposed changes as an amendment with everyone, then we'll vote on that, and then we'll proceed to the amended or not amended motion. There are times I might reach out to the town and say, if you have any proposed amendments, it might be a good idea to put them in writing before the meeting and actually let the moderator look at them, to understand them. In this case, it's spontaneous, so it all works, it's teamwork. And while we're waiting, one of my favorite new sayings is, even 50 days on a crooked ledge can still keep you on the straight and narrow.
Been there 50 years, I'll never make it.
I don't see enough of writing. And yes, the moderator has prerogative to not have anything in writing, and, ah, if you're going to take a word out, maybe, or if you're going to remove a section, maybe, but this is a little above and beyond, so we really need it in writing, because I have to read it back to you so we know what we're voting on. And the Town Clerk needs to put it in her minutes. Three penguins walk into a bar. No, I'm not going to do that. It's a joke, it's a joke, I wasn't going to do it. I already invited him, and then he came over and had counsel with you. Are you ready?
I'm ready, I've been...
All right, speak up.
I didn't hear you ask me. Okay, Article Five...
I, I got to get right up to that silver thingy.
Article Five, Section Three. The Town Clerk is a chief elected official and public records access officer...
We, we're not hearing you.
Okay, the Town Clerk is a chief election official and public records access officer and serves on the Board of Registars.
Yeah?
I happen to serve on the Board of Registars. The registrars, Board of Registars is three people, one Democrat, one Republican, and one independent person that sit on the board, plus the clerk. I've got a problem with the way it's done. When we had this last election, was my first time, and I told, I was told that my job was just to sign off on all, all the sheets. And I said, no, I'm on the Board of Registars, I should be reviewing these to make sure...
What does this have, what does this have to do with replacing the section? So we're now talking about the philosophy of past...
I'm saying, I'm saying that this, maybe we need something in there.
What?
Something that spells out the duties...
I have no idea what you, where you're at, so...
The Board of Assessors. I was told that the, my job was to sign off...
No, 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 no. You read a sentence, the Town Clerk is chief election official and public records access officer, and serves on the Board of Registars, period.
Okay.
What part of that?
She serves on the Board of Registars, but I'm saying to you that when I went in...
Well, you're out, this is out of the scope. Sorry.
If I had the time, I would put together a bylaw...
I need you to sit down.
...and amendment to this, but I don't have the time tonight.
I need you to sit down. Thank you.
You need me to sit down.
Okay. As it's written, and I'm reading it, and you wrote it in two copies, you're writing in two copies, okay.
Oh, no, I was, I was...
Replace all instances of C, S slash he, or his, her, with they. So we're doing it for this particular article?
Yes, I'm writing the one for the next article, so I don't have to wait for it.
Okay, for Section One, they are the official keeper, they respond to inquiries. Section Three, to serve upon any board or committee of their election. Section Six, they also serve as the Board of, of, as, oh, as a burial agent, sorry. And Section Seven, except as they remain in their custody. Is that your proposed amendment?
It is, yes.
Okay. All right. So, we have a second? Okay, we have a motion made and seconded on an amendment as read. You want to give a few words again?
No.
Okay. Good answer. Anybody else on the amendment? On the proposed amendment?
Yes.
Only.
Chris Hagan, Palmory Meadow Road. If you substitute the pronoun they, that is a plural pronoun. And I, wait, wait. I believe I have the floor. I understand that we are trying to make it more accepting. However, could we just say, wherever it's he, she, just substitute, the Town Clerk is the official keeper? If we get into the he, she, they, it gets, I believe in an official document right now, it gets too confusing.
I'm seeing an aggressive nodder of a head in the audience, some imagining others share your opinion. So, one concept is to amend the amendment, because we can do that. Now, we have may motions, primary, secondary. So we can amend, and amend a proposed amendment and talk about the proposed amendment to the amendment, and then talk about the amendment, which, piece of cake, and then the amended motion. So you want to change...
I want to, I guess, amend his amendment. To substitute...
Yeah, I hear you.
...the position's name, where he, she, just to avoid confusion.
Okay.
It's not correct in numbers if you're going grammatically.
Okay.
But, and I know, I understand the concept.
So other than voting the proposed amendment down, you have the opportunity to amend the amendment, you need to start writing.
All right, so I need to take a pen and change it and give it to you.
Yes.
I will do that, thank you.
Andrea Hearn, Palmory Meadow Road. I just wanted to make a comment that the word they has a definition of used to refer...
You're, you're reading?
Sorry.
And I would lift that up.
The word they has a definition of used to refer to a person of unspecified gender. It is not simply a plural pronoun anymore.
I, I didn't get the memo. It's not going to be a personal pronoun anymore.
A plural word.
Plural.
Not just a plural pronoun, it's used...
That's what I meant.
Zach Farrell, Mountain View Circle. It can be used as a plural pronoun, but it is also used as a singular, so therefore, when somebody says, for example, oh, they left their keys over there, that's a singular person leaving their keys somewhere, you don't know the person's gender, therefore, it's, so it can be used in either instance. That's, that's why I proposed it the way I did, rather than use, that, rather than replacing it with Town Clerk, et cetera, et cetera, that's all. That, that was my logic for it.
Between these bylaw amendments and somebody doing knitting in the room, I'm dizzy. My eyes watching the...
I do understand that, and I appreciate it, I just think in an official...
You don't appreciate it, the very fact that you said you appreciate it means you Okay, I have a solution. We have, wherever it says she, he, we have the Town Clerk, the Town Clerk, the Town Clerk, the Town Clerk. So let's talk about voting on changing the language to the Town Clerk, the Second Amendment, if you will. We're amending the amendment. So all, all those in favor, instead of they, putting Town Clerk for this motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying nay.
Nay.
Oh, no. Put your cards up that say aye.
Did you read that? It doesn't read.
Okay, I did read it. Put it down. Put the positive, okay, down. Those opposed? Raise your hands. Okay, the ayes have it. So we're back to... You want to count? You want to count? Okay, we'll count.
We don't know what we're voting on.
Okay, I read it. I read it, I'll read it, I'll read it again. This is an amendment to an amendment. Rather than saying she, he, we're going to substitute the Town Clerk, or rather than saying they, as the amendment had, we're instead going to substitute the Town Clerk. So Section One, the Town Clerk is an elected position with a three-year term, the Town Clerk is the official keeper of town records and public rec...
I still don't know how you're voting.
What? Oh, yeah, yeah.
Point of clarification, Mr. Moderator. Can we, can we vote on an amendment to an amendment that we haven't voted on the original amendment yet?
Yeah.
You can.
Yeah. We, yeah, exactly.
I don't know how we...
And then we vote on the motion.
So we can vote to change something that we haven't voted to change yet?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, so look, I mean, we're making multiple amendments here, but, but the way that I'm, the way that I think we're voting right now is to substitute, you know, he, she, his, et cetera, with Town Clerk. It just doesn't, some sections of this just don't read. So for instance, Section Three, if you read this sentence and you substitute the his, which is close to the end, it doesn't work. The Town Clerk shall...
There's no change...
Go to Section Three, I'm going to read the sentence.
Section Three.
Yeah, the bold Section Three, the new Section Three.
No change. Proposed.
Well, there is, because there is a his about five words from the end, and if you throw a Town Clerk in there, it just doesn't read, Robert.
Oh, his election. Good call.
So you got to throw in a Town Clerk there, and it just doesn't read right.
This is messy.
What's that?
All right, I have an idea. I have an idea. Let's, let's divide the question whether we substitute they or substitute the title of the office, in this case, Town Clerk, and we'll vote on the two. And then we'll vote whether or not, once we've picked a selection, we'll vote whether or not to include Town Clerk in the motion, how am I doing that? Or to put they in the motion that we're going to vote on. Tammy?
Yeah?
What?
Keep going.
Okay, all right. So any discussion on this? I'm going to propose the vote for, go ahead.
Don't hurt me, but here's the thing. The committee that worked on this spent hours on this, and you didn't help them do any of this work, they probably want to hurt us. So here's the thing, if you change this one, and I absolutely respect using they, but if we change this one, then it's not consistent in the document. So I hate to say this, but I think we should accept it as they proposed it, and then there can be a review so that all parts are adjusted or not, including they. Sorry. I really want to go home, I got to tell you.
So that means, that, that means when we vote on the second... So that means, that, that means when we vote on the Second Amendment, you can simply vote no. Yes? Point of order means I recognize you, and you come over the mic so I can hear you. We have to vote on the Second Amendment first. Second proposed amendment.
Jane Rothschild, Cold Spring Road. It's late, and I think everybody's tired. This discussion has raised a lot of issues, and what I would like to do is move to table this article until a later time.
We have a motion to table with no debate. So all those in favor of killing this article will vote.
I'm not, I'm not suggesting that it be killed.
That's what table means.
Well, I'm suggesting it be deferred perhaps to the annual town meeting in May.
That means killing it.
Well, then I would say...
We have to take action on it.
Then I would say, let's kill it for tonight and bring it up again in May.
We have a motion, no, we can't vote on bringing it up in May. We only can do what we can do in our special town meeting. We have a motion that takes precedent to kill the motion on the floor. That means we end discussion. We go on to the next article. That means when you vote in favor of killing the article. We vote against killing the article. That means we continue discussion. And there is no debate on this particular type of motion. All those in favor of killing this motion, say aye. Opposed, say nay. We're going to continue discussion. We're going to vote, the motion to kill the article failed. So we're going to vote on the amendment. Yep.
Carl Keener County Road. Under the circumstances where we've had all this, where we've got all this confusion, is it possible that the two individuals that have submitted these amendments can withdraw their amendments, and we could vote on the main article and then allow it be reviewed later?
Do, do they agree?
Zach Farrell, Mountain View Circle. My question then is that if I withdraw at this point and it's revisited another time, it would then be voted on it when we revise it, correct? My understanding of the discussion that they've spent this much time on it, that they would then have to bring it up for a vote if they revise it in the future, correct? I guess I'm just thinking that if we just want to get it over with and rip the bandit off now, that we can address the other bylaws going forward.
Francine Tishman, Glendale Road. My recommendation would be that we go ahead and vote on the article, and then, as we did in substituting select board for Board of Selectmen through the entire bylaws and every other reference that the town uses, that we go ahead and do that at a later date, which supersedes the language that we're voting on tonight to substitute select, okay? That's the easiest way around.
The Second Amendment, thank you. The Second Amendment, do you agree to withdraw it? Or no? I need a yes or no. I'm going to start this, I'm going to start this where we left off. Francine? Francine, I need you to sit down.
All right.
The person who made the Second Amendment, who's not looking at me right now, I need you to go to the mic. A quick answer, do you...
I would, I would like to be fair to everybody. If I withdraw mine...
Yes or no?
I'm just trying, I'm not trying...
All right, we're going to vote on the Second Amendment.
Excuse me, I'm not trying to be rude, but I don't understand some...
You're not rude, you're not...
I have a question.
You're giving me direction, because you're not willing to withdraw. I have the responsibility of an amendment on the floor, which means we have to vote on it.
Well...
If you're not, if you're not going to withdraw your proposed amendment...
Are you withdrawing?
We have to vote.
I will withdraw mine.
Sorry?
I will withdraw mine.
Okay, all those in favor of the withdrawal, say aye. Opposed? All right, we're withdrawing...
I will withdraw my amendment.
All those in favor of withdrawing the amendment, first one, say aye. Opposed? We're drawing, we're back to the main motion. Thank you. Teamwork. All those in favor of the motion unamended under Article 22, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article 22 passes by majority. May I hear, may I hear a motion for Article 23, please?
Amend general town bylaws slash Article 5 Town Treasurer and read number as 6. To see if the town will vote to amend Article 5 of the town's general bylaws entitled Town Treasurer by renumbering the section as Article 6 and renaming the title Town Treasurer slash Collector, and renumbering subsequent sections of the general bylaws as may be necessary, and making the following additional changes shown in bold below as follows, or take any other actions relative thereto. Article 6 Town Treasurer slash Collector. Excuse me. Replace existing section 1, quote, "Section 1, the Town Treasurer shall make a detailed report of receipts and expenditures and of all trust funds in his charge, together with a statement of town debt, which shall be printed in the annual report," end quotes, with the following new section 1. "Section 1, the Treasurer slash Collector is an elected position with a three-year term. She, he receives all money belonging to the town and expends and accounts for it. The Treasurer slash Collector performs duties in accordance with the general laws of Massachusetts as it relates to the management of all town finances, which include, but are not limited to: 1. Maintaining custody of all monies belonging to the town and accounting for these monies; 2. Issuing debt required for authorized short-term and long-term borrowing; 3. Issuing bonds to raise money for certain projects or expenditures; 4. Issuing and maintaining records of municipal lien certificates, which are filed at the Registry of Deeds; 5. Collecting and recording all taxes, payments, fees, and/or penalties received by various town departments, boards, commissions, and committees; 6. Having the authority to take title to the taxpayer's property and to undertake proceedings to foreclose the owner's right to redeem that property when a taxpayer becomes delinquent; 7. Possessing a number of responsibilities relating to payment of salaries and wages; 8. Issuing in the town annual report a detailed report of payroll earnings, trust fund balances, and committed, collected, and outstanding taxes in a statement of town debt."
Thank you for the article. May I hear a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to change the town bylaws to amend Article 5 of the town's general bylaws entitled Town Treasurer slash Collector by amending the existing language as noted, deleting existing language where noted, and adding new language shown in boldface text, and renumbering this article slash section as Article 6 as set forth in Article 23 of the warrant for the February 11th, 2020 special town meeting.
Thank you. Motion made, or your second?
Second.
Motion made in second. Finance Committee not within their purview, simple majority. Who would like to speak for this, please? You're a great audience, by the way. Thank you.
Susan Sussman, Golden Circle. It's my understanding, Mr. Moderator, that in Article 15 we passed that the treasurer-collector is now an appointed position, so we would need to change the language in section 1. So I propose we amend the language to the treasurer-collector as an appointed position, and...
Why do you, that has to be approved by an election of the town. The action that we make tonight doesn't instantly become legal.
But as soon as that does, then this language is not going to be correct.
But we can't imagine what may happen at a town election. Thank you.
Maureen Groden, Cheryl Lane. I agree with the gentleman in the back that suggested that we change the language. I appreciate all the work that went into these bylaws, but I think that we're starting the process of amending bylaws. It seems to me the perfect time to be able to do that, instead of just saying, let's just accept it the way it is. I think making a suggestion to say "they" is consistent with currently a practice around gender, so I think this particular article, all it requires is changing she, he to they, and I would like to make that amendment.
Are you making a motion? Amendment? I need that in writing. Are you changing one, or are you changing more? Just one? Okay. We have an amendment to change where it says section 1. The treasurer-collector is an elected position with a three-year term. S slash he. We have an amendment to, a proposed amendment to change it. I did not pull the cord this time. You okay, Matt? He bounced right back. So we have an amendment to change a word. Do we have a second? All right, we have, we're going to vote on the amendment to change S slash he to they.
Mr. Moderator, point, don't we have discussion on that?
Sorry?
Don't we have discussion on that?
About this, yeah.
Okay.
I was just going to call for, for anybody who wanted to speak on it. It's usually the person who made the amendment, but you're right there, go ahead.
Tom Livingston, Pomeroy Meadow Road. I, I would suggest, because we use treasurer-collector twice in there, that we just use treasurer-collector all three times.
That's not about they. We're only looking at they so far. Are you making...
Correct.
Okay.
But it's, instead of saying "they receive all money," just say "the treasurer-collector receives all money."
All those in favor of having a, or a motion, say aye. Opposed? Okay, so you're making a motion to put treasurer-collector?
Sure.
And you're, whatever you're going to motion, you're going to put in writing?
Absolutely.
Thank you. So what is it? Excuse me.
I was going to put that in writing.
I know, but I want to hear it first.
"The treasurer-collector receives all money."
Thank you. So we have an amendment to consider. Rather than S slash he, we're substituting the treasurer-collector. So we, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Motion made and seconded? Any discussion? Saying none, we're going to vote on the amendment to change S slash he to the treasurer-collector. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, my majority. Okay, now we have an amended motion. Anybody want to talk about the amended motion?
Jennifer Day, Treasurer Collector. I'm suggesting that we table the article.
We have a motion to kill the art... We have a motion to kill the article. There's no debate when that happens. We kill the article, that means it's not discussed or voted on tonight. All those in favor of tabling, killing the article? Motion under this Article 23, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Discussion continues. The amendment failed. Anybody want to speak on the motion? Well, do you have anything to say about the motion? Yea or nay, or questions?
Vicki Morrow, Pomeroy Meadow Road, Town Accountant. You know, I appreciate the hard work that this committee did, but I think, as a gentleman mentioned earlier, this kind of puts us into a box, so to speak. If you look at number eight, where it says issuing in the town annual report a detailed report of payroll earnings, trust fund balances, et cetera, et cetera. If we want to change what we put in our town report per the treasurer-collector, we have to come back to town meeting to change that. You know, if you make this too detailed, if we want to change any of these duties, most of which are, are done by mass general law, and they're all spelled out, we have to come back to town meeting to change the bylaw, then get it approved by the Attorney General before we can actually enact it. So I think it's too, too detailed for this to be a bylaw.
Thank you.
Francine Tishman, Glendale Road. First and foremost, I want to say that in writing, in revising these bylaws, the whole committee agreed that we wanted to make the information as user-friendly and transparent, and I think it's important for people in town to use this document to understand exactly the role and functions that people have, and the implications as, as taxpayers in terms of their responsibilities. And secondly, as I said at the beginning, we did go through these documents with the department heads or the committees, and in fact, this is the exact language we received from the treasurer-collector. So we had proposed other language, and, and we resolved and agreed that this would be the final language that we would use. So I don't have anything more to say about it. I'm sorry, it's such a laborious process. You should be us sitting around the table trying to do this, but thank you.
Thank you. By the way, the motion to table requires a two-thirds approval, so if it sounded equal, equal, it wasn't. Yes, next.
Jennifer Day, Treasurer Collector.
A little closer?
Jennifer Day, Treasurer Collector. I only brought up tabling the article due to the fact that it's going to go on the ballot in May to become appointed, and then it would have to be redone anyways.
Okay, but when you, when you vote to kill an article, or a motion to kill it, there is no debate, which means discussion. Thank you. Anybody want to add? Saying none? We'll vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article 23, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. That's close. All those in favor, raise your cards up high. I'm going to have the counters come and count. I'm going to have the counters come and count. All those in favor of the motion, raise your cards high so they can count. This is the amended... Keep your cards up. Anybody in the audience can challenge a moderator's call by standing up and having six other people with them, so seven people can call for a vote. So a voice vote becomes a card vote, a card vote becomes, you know, the secret ballot vote. Yes?
Twenty. Nineteen.
Nineteen. Put your cards down, sorry. All those opposed, raise your hand.
Fourteen. Nine.
The amended motion under Article 23 passes 39 to 23. That concludes our business for the night. I want to attain a motion now to dissolve our special town meeting. Second? All in favor? Opposed? The special town meeting is dissolved. Thank you. Ms. Lucy Darnar, town clerk. Carl Keener, deputy town moderator. Counters, Ryan Arnold, Tim Riley, Jen Ramsey, East Hampton Media. Thank you all. And for the officers in the back of the room, thank you. Good night, safe home.